Morning, everyone. Welcome to Albert County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Today is July twenty-fifth. It is nine oh two. Dallas, could we do roll, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. At this time, I think we have Pastor Brian James. Sir?
Sir. Oh my God, I'm so proud today and I just praise you for who you are, the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, and I thank you for what you've done for us, making the way for us through the central waters, praising this world with its name. Lord, I thank you for the worship and your goodness, and I pray you for that, Lord. I thank you for this meeting, this county, our nation, that honors you, and I thank you for the hand of your mighty providence that led county fathers, and I pray you for your commissioners today, as they make difficult and challenging decisions that will affect our county, community, and families for many generations to come. Lord, I thank you, everyone here today, the marriages that are represented, the families that are represented, the businesses that are represented, the counties, our team, employees, and staff, and I just pray your blessing to help us when we not settled, asking you for any blessing of your best. We know that nothing is difficult for you in that work, and nothing can be done to sustain it. It's helpful, it's wasted, it's signed in Jesus' name, I pray it, amen.
Amen. I pray that you do the Bible about the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any changes to our agenda? Are we okay with determining it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. On to the consent agenda, do we have?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
On to elected officials, department heads, and staff reports. I believe we have a few?
Yes, Commissioners, Sam, Albert County Manager, I'll start off. I'd like to introduce our new Director of Community and Development Services, Christina Stanton. Christina, stand up. Christina is joining us. This is her second week, I believe. She's been to two Planning Commission meetings already. She is off and running, and we're happy to have her here. Christina, you want to introduce yourself a little bit?
In the mic. Happy to be here, still a lot to learn, a lot to get used to, but I actually grew up in a rural community, so I feel very at home. Live right outside Simla, excited for being here, for my family, for the county, just everything. Spent the last twelve years in Leesup, Missouri, which is a suburb outside of Kansas City, so lots of planning experience from there, and happy to help any way I can.
Thank you, Christina. Very happy to have Christina here. She is a certified planner, and does have a rural background. I believe she's originally from south, central, southeast Oklahoma. Did I get that right, or close enough? Okay, good. So, we're very happy to have her here.
Welcome to the table.
The other piece of business I want to mention is that we have received nominations for the Library Board, and we should expect to put that on an upcoming agenda very soon.
Sam, could you just check with Tim Miller, the director over there, and see if we're going to see the addendum to the annual report we'd asked for?
I would do that. That was back from February fourteenth meeting, I believe. Is that about the timeframe we were talking about?
Your memory is better than mine, but yeah, I'd just like to have that when we're considering the nominations.
Okay, I'll ask for that, prior to the August eighth agenda item.
Yeah, and you might also ask if they direct that through you rather than through the Treasurer's office somehow or another, the way they communicate with the board is circulated.
I think it was going to the clerk, but I will mention that also, thank you. And that's all I have, Commissioners.
Any more announcements over there? Rory?
Commissioners, Rory Hale, Director of Public Works. I've got a couple of updates for you. The Simla radio tower, I think you're aware of. They've broken ground finally. We had some issues with the site location. We got that worked out with the property owner. They've done the excavation work. They should be pouring the concrete this week or next. And they're giving us an estimated completion of early September on that. Ponderosa Park drainage. This is one of the first projects that I had to deal with when I came on board almost a year ago. After many, many meetings, lots of survey work, lots of engineering, and discussions with the residents, we're ready to get started on it. We actually had a meeting with several of the residents yesterday. Commissioner Richardson was in attendance there. We're all kind of excited about it. I think the expectations are not the greatest at this point from folks, but we understand that. I think we've got some good crews that are going to be out there doing the work. They're going to actually get started tomorrow, doing some clearing of brush and trees, potholing. They're probably going to be in Friday as well. It's going to be about a four-week project. We'll do some before and after pictures, and I'll share those with you. But it's been a long time coming. This has been a problem in this community for years and years and years. So hopefully, we can get this fixed and kind of spruce it up a little bit. It's not specifically just the drainage, I might add. It's, we're reestablishing the right of way. We have a lot of problems in a lot of the subdivisions. I think there's sections of the road that are maybe, if, twenty feet, barely twenty feet wide. So, we're trying to reestablish the road. It's going to enable us to do a better job of maintaining that road in those ditches going forward, so. The other one was Albert. We know that it's kind of prone to flooding, but with the recent rains we've had, there's been some additional flooding. Road and Bridge Superintendent and a couple of the foremen and I went out there yesterday. There are some things that we can do in-house. There's a lot of things that we're not going to be able to, but we did find a 20-10 study that was conducted. I don't know that anything was done with it, so I'm actually going to sit down with the county engineer next week and see if we can go through that and come up with some options. We definitely need to do something, but, you know, at this point, I mean, if there's a few things we can do in-house to mitigate some of the problems, I think we at least need to do that, and then going forward, at least have an idea what we're looking at for other improvements.
The three of us went out there yesterday to have a visual inspection of it. You've got some challenges with respect to terrain.
No, I'd just say that. Twenty-ten study, I'd imagine the study was done about the same time that the economy crashed, so there's probably no revenues to even look at, making any changes at that time. But I do appreciate the, kind of the full court press on Stagecoach and Ponderosa Pine. So, I mean, every time it rains, the road that is a riverbed kind of changes its path. I know we've had exposed gas lines, phone lines, so. As I said, I understand the residents are a little wary that this will fix it, but it's an opportunity...
I think we all understand that.
An opportunity to show that we're doing what we can with what we've inherited. The Simla Tower, does that carry antennas for the school district as well out there?
I did not mention that, right. The school district down there will have their antenna mounted on the same tower.
So, that'll be done before school starts?
Yeah, oh yeah, well.
Ish.
Ish.
Close.
Ish. Real close. Well, if it went back to when we went to school, the first day of school is September the fifth.
That's true.
Rory, we're hearing some plates from the back row that they can't hear you.
I beg your pardon.
Okay. No. Thanks.
Thanks, Rory. More? Dallas, could you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a quick update on what's going on in the clerk's office. Just as a reminder, we will be closed in motor vehicle August first and second, coming right up. We've been looking forward to this for a while, not so much the closure, but the new system. But we're trying to get our word out as much as we can to everybody that we will be closed there. It's state mandated as we get a new software system for the motor vehicle departments clear across the state. And so, it's going to be a good thing when it's all said and done, but we're going to have some bumps as we're closed for a couple of days. But we'll make do with what we can, and we're doing everything we can to get the word out on that. The other thing I'd like to let you know is we did finish the 2018 primary, finally. Glad to get that put to bed. We did our recount last Wednesday, and the results did not change, but Mr. Pettit did pick up one extra vote. And I'd be happy to go into detail on how that happened, if anybody would like to. We can do it now, or you can ask me afterwards, but there's reasons why that happened. It's all following the procedures that the Secretary of State's office has put out, and we actually had an observer there, and when he left, he said, "You guys did everything right on spot." So, we were very proud about that. And so, I just want to point out, we do have the two ladies that do a lion's share of the work preparing for the elections. Ron DeBran, our Elections Manager, Rachel Buchanan, our Assistant, they do a great job, and I'd just like to, everybody to recognize that.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we have open public comment. Can I remind folks that this is, this is for any item unrelated to items under discussion or action, because you'll have the opportunity to comment at those times. So, do we have any open comment? None at this time? On to discussion items. First one, right to farm. Do we have a proclamation? Do, alright.
Except this up here.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Justin Clausen, Director of Administration, and I am proud to stand before you today and introduce a proclamation for this county, and it is the Albert County Right to Farm Proclamation. Before I read the proclamation, I would like to introduce some folks that are here that have come from the Farm Bureau, Colorado Farm Bureau. We have folks from Douglas County and Albert County. B.J. Bushman from Douglas County. Leah Brayton from Albert County Farm Bureau. Tyler Labato from Colorado Farm Bureau, thanks for coming down. Jane Lundwell from Colorado Farm Bureau. Morgan Milligan from Colorado Farm Bureau. Help me with your name, Evy. Evy. Evy Scott from Albert County Farm Bureau. Claudia Harrison from Albert County Farm Bureau. Derek Patrick from Albert County Farm Bureau. Bob Whitehead from Albert County Farm Bureau, and Linda Wire. So, thanks, everybody, for coming out, and I would also like to recognize Bill and Nancy Harris. They're also from Albert County Farm Bureau, and they are one of the driving forces that has helped us push this through, so. Protecting agricultural producers and the farming heritage of Albert County. Whereas the state of Colorado has declared policy to conserve, protect, and encourage development and improvement of its agricultural land for the production of food and other agricultural products. Whereas Albert County's long heritage is built on a foundation of agricultural production, and whereas the right to farm protects agriculture, including the ability of agricultural producers to create and modify operations, and whereas Albert County supports reasonable actions that protect the privilege and the rights of farmers and ranchers to produce and market without undue restrictions, regulations, or harassment, and whereas farmers and ranchers in the county have the right to pursue the best management practices, most ideally suited to their operation. And whereas Albert County opposes attempts by local entities to limit the production or use of genetically modified crops or animals on public and private lands, and whereas Albert County does not support policies that restrict the use of federally approved and registered products, and whereas the county supports that farmers be protected from undue liability and nuisance suits when carrying out normal production practices, and whereas the county supports the basic right to farm, right to harvest, and right to access roads and highways. And whereas, if for any reason any entity takes action which results in the decrease of value property and/or commodity production, the entity causing the loss should be required to compensate the owner of the damaged property an amount equal to the value that would be realized from routine harvest, had the land remained as the owner planned. And whereas Albert County does not classify agricultural operations, including greenhouses used for above-ground cultivation, aquaponics, hydroponics, or areoponics of food crops for bedding plants and industrial or commercial enterprises, simply because they do not fit traditional perceptions of agriculture. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the L County Board of County Commissioners that we proclaim Albert County as a right-to-farm county. That, two, that the county shall be identified as such within documents and by appropriate signage. And three, that we encourage every person to play a role by supporting our county's wide range of agricultural producers. And four, that we call upon citizens to work collaboratively with producers to come to agreements that encourage the sustainment of agriculture in the county. So, Commissioners, at this point, I'd like to present a draft sign that we are proposing that is placed at major entrance, ingresses, entrances into the county. On first glance, we're kind of thinking it's somewhere around twelve to fifteen signs. We've reached out to the Farm Bureau and asked for some monetary support to help us pay for these signs, and our Road and Bridge Department has stepped up and said that they're willing to put these signs on our county roads where appropriate and where allowed. So, we're going to work to get that part done. So, this is kind of a draft of what that sign potentially may look like going forward, as stated in the proclamation. So, without further ado, I would like to touch for a second on Bill Harris. Bill has been incremental in making this happen. And, uh... Bill's got some health issues that he's faced with, and as a county, we're proud to make this happen.
I'd just like to say, this kind of came to our attention about a year ago as we were working on the master plan. Bill, representing Farm Bureau, came to us and asked that, as the new comprehensive plan for the county was developed, that it recognized the right to farm. I know it's been a central tenet of Farm Bureau's lobbying for many years, but it was really great, as this went through the public process and the Planning Commission Development, that that language was inserted in the master plan. We know the county's growing. As growth happens and people start developing lands for residences next door to active farms, some communities, over time, have been, gotten pressure from new residents to do something about the smell, the noise, the, you know, the things that are part of active farming, part of the heritage of the county. So, this is a small step, but it's a public one, to recognize that as we grow, we need to live in harmony with the farmers and ranchers in this county and make sure that we don't lose that piece of our history in this county. It ties directly to one of the several values that we established in our strategic plan, which was respect for our culture and our history. So, I think this is the right thing to do. I know we've got it under discussion today. I do think that we ought to actually take action and officially push out the proclamation, but I know there's probably some others that want to talk, so I'll be quiet. Thanks.
I don't have much more to say. Chris said it all so well. But I do agree that we should have a motion to move it from a discussion item to an action item, and if it's alright with the chairman, I still move.
I'll second.
Seconding? Okay. Lot of respect and admiration, Bill. You've been driving force behind this and constantly coming up here and supporting this and working with us, so, thank you. So, that. Do we have any public comment on the right to farm? At this time, I think we've got most, and then second?
The only comment I have is Bill, for your input.
Do you, good, alright.
I'll be quick. My name is Taylor Labato. I am here representing the state Colorado Farm Bureau Office. I would just like to thank you all for recognizing the right to farm in Bill and Nancy. I'm relatively new to the state Farm Bureau Office, and the both of you have been an integral part of what we do, and we are proud to be here to support both of you on this wonderful day. And we love Albert County, and we truly are honored to be here for the two of you. So, thank you all for your support, and we, as a state office, are here to help in any way we can. Thank you.
That's, I'd just like to say, it's nice to see some of the younger folks, too. I mean, we've got some folks that have been involved in this for a long, long time, but newer producers like Derek here, and I know, Justin, you've got some cattle running as well. I mean, it is an important part of the county, and it's good to see it passing from generation to generation as well, so.
Some more comments? Okay, we've got a vote in a second. Home favor?
Aye.
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 Bill, do you want to frame one of these?
Excuse me, Commissioners. If I understood the motion right, the motion was just to move to an action item? And not to approve the proclamation?
Alrighty. Then I would move that we adopt the proclamation as presented. Aye. And if we could, I think the timing is good. If we could get copies made and posted at the Animal Barns for farms, so folks all to are aware of this as they come through the county fair.
Motor Ops, get some pictures.
Up to you guys. You guys like a picture of all the people? Yeah, that's what I was thinking, get everybody together that was parked, could we?
Grab the sign, let's have everybody over here. Bill, Max, who are you guys?
We're in charge.
We've lost a commission.
We have. He had to take off for a second. We will just take a minute until our... Our third member gets back here?
Yep.
Yep, he had to, he asked to be excused for a minute, so we're...
He's okay?
I hope he's under it.
Did you see him?
Huh?
No, no, he didn't.
Oh, it's alright.
Yeah, it's okay, man.
You okay?
Yeah, okay.
Alright. Onto the next item. We've got a GIS update, I believe. Sam?
Commissioners, we're getting close to the end on this project, or at least this phase of the project, but I did want to give everybody an update. We did get that draft final report in. I've sent it back for some modifications. I don't think it quite met the intent or scope of the contract, so we should see that very soon. I've already had one meeting with the contractor, and he's coming back again today as we start scoping out the next phase of this. So, Phase One was to take a look at our data and see what condition it is in, what it is, condition our data is in. Phase Two of this project is to put out an RFP, to actually fix or replace our data and provide critical GIS services to the, not only the county, but staff and electeds and departments, but also our partners with, at the towns and the fire districts in those areas. So, we are moving forward with that, with this. It might be a couple of weeks before I come back to you to give you another update, but we are making quite a bit of progress as we get close to the end of Phase One.
Just as a general comment about the GIS, it's amazing at how many different activities within the county that the GIS impact. We were working on Tuesday morning, working on the update of the planning and zoning and subdivision regulations, and just the mapping of the zoning overlays requires an update of the GIS. So, my comment here is just meant to say, holy cow, it affects almost each and every, the assessor's office, the planning, the zoning, the fire departments, the sheriff departments. This is probably one of, even elections from what I'm told. So, the whole point is, is that this is a really an important, uh... review aspect, need of the county.
There you go. Big project.
It's a big project.
About a long time ago, I'm on it. Alright. Do we have any public comment on our GIS update? No? Okay. Grab fee schedule.
So this is the policy document that's gonna go with the fee schedule that is gonna be delivered later. The, the policy is a guidance document, a guidance policy on how we want to go about setting fees across departments for development and changes in land use. This will include impact fees, it will include permit, application fees and permit fees. Everything from the start of, at the pre-application stage, all the way through septic and wastewater inspection at the tail end. So we have multiple departments that are involved in this project. They include CDS, Public Works, which has building and road and bridge, as well as HHS on the septic and wastewater side. So we, in the past, I don't think all three departments have communicated and coordinated. This policy document, this guidance document will set that stage. Part two of this, once we, I will bring this back on the eighth after final review by all my department heads. They've taken first round. This is the second draft of the, of the document. I will bring this back on August eighth for adoption. At that point, I also, also hope to have the draft fee schedule, which will basically come in three separate sheets of paper. There'll be one for CDS, one for road and bridge, and one for HHS on the septic and wastewater side. And then we will see all three of those together at the same time for discussion and then adoption at a future date.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I like the fact, I mean, not only does it drive the coordination in different departments, but I mean, we have statute and regulation that lets us impose fees, but I think it's really important to articulate what we do with those fees. It's to make sure that development's paying its way, that, you know, impacts to the county are addressed by the folks that are causing those impacts. It's, you know, not to just create another revenue stream, but really give a, kind of the county's philosophical basis of why we're assessing fees. So I, I think it's an important document, even if it's a short one, you know?
Well, everything you said there is exactly true. And the other part of it is, is that when the three of us were sworn in, we looked at the fees and to be quite frank with you, often I couldn't figure out what this particular fee was for compared to some other fee. So what we're trying to do, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Sam here, is make them consistent and predictable and fair.
So I took those three words and expanded it into about a page and a half.
Do we have any public comment on our fee structure? Okay. Next item, county-owned properties. I believe Justin, you're working on this.
Afternoon again. Justin Clausen, Director of Administration. And last time I promised that we'd have an update on the, on our progress on the county-owned property research. So the purpose of this is to provide an update and research, on the research being conducted collaboratively between the administration department and the assessors. So first of all, I'd like to say that I greatly appreciate the assessor's staff and the work that they've put in to help us get through this. And we are on a very good track to come up with the required information that we need to make very good decisions on these properties. We're not quite there and we're gonna continue to work on that. So there is a staff summary, obviously within, within your packet. As we continue to move forward, we will continue to bring updates to you so that you're abreast of, of our progress. So, other than that, we're, we're in the process of sorting it out and we're really liking where we're going with it, so.
You're the next person to.
What? But I did have one question. What time do you get, you keep coming up and wishing us a good afternoon? I, I mean, I-
Good morning.
One of the things you might make a comment if you choose to is that there's a large number of properties. And each one of them was become under the ownership of the county for different reasons, at different times, with different layers of requirements and those kind of things. If you make just kind of a broad, general comment, it would be interesting for the people that are here.
Sure. So one of the things that we're running into is it's not, it's not a matter that the county doesn't know we own these properties at all. We know we own these properties. The difficulty is in the fact of how they're categorized. Many of them are categorized by a name, by a number, and then they may not have the, the documents tied to them as easy, as easily as you would like to be able to sort through them. So that's what the assessor's office is helping us do now, is really build that profile for each one of these properties so that we have good data to work from. And it's not that it's not data that we don't have. They're pulling it from what we have. So we know what these properties are. It's just a, it's a very time-intensive process to go through and sort this all out, so.
So you're building a catalog, really?
That's what we're working on, but we're just not quite there yet.
Thanks, Justin.
Public comment?
Any public comment on our, um, properties? No? Okay. Thank you, Justin. You're on the next one too. Update on the employee handbook?
So the employee handbook, Diana, she is not, she just stepped out. She's put an extensive amount of time into getting the new revision of our employee handbook up to speed. We had a meeting this last week with the key players and staff and it was a very good meeting, round table, adding what we needed to add, subtracting what we needed to subtract, and making sure that the next revision of our employee handbook is very functional for what we need at the county. We have reached out to Employers Council and asked them to review this and we have been notified that they are pretty far backlog. So we're kind of expecting a ten-week turnaround. So they're, we're, we're gonna take it off for right now and once we get back from Employers Council their recommendation, we'll bring it back to you.
I appreciate the work going into it. I know the, the current iteration was many, many years and very stalled updates and it was addressed and adopted last year. And I think just keeping on this annual cycle and as statute changes as we learn lessons within the county.
Right.
Ten weeks sound, ten weeks is a long time.
It is, and, and-
But it's better than the many, many years that we've seen in the past, so.
So as soon as we can get it back from, from Employers Council, get their recommendation, get those recommendations incorporated. But I gotta say one thing, Diana does a fabulous job of keeping track of the changes that need to happen throughout the year and working with our county attorney to make sure that those things make sense as we work through this revision. So she, she doesn't miss a beat. She makes sure that those things get incorporated and we capture the needed language that we need in there, so.
I noticed the other day, a lot of work went into it and a lot of collaborative effort from everybody, quite a few departments in the county. So it looked like everybody was working hard, so that was good. A lot of, a lot of input from everyone.
Very collaborative effort, for sure. Am I next again?
Any public comment on our employee handbook? Okay. Next one, we've got an IGA between Albert County Clerk and the Special Districts of Dallas.
Good morning, commissioners, once again. This is just to get on the radar. We'll have this as an action item next meeting. But this is similar to what we did last year as far as approving the template of the IGA between the clerk's office and the various entities that coordinate with us for the November election. And so Mr. Greer has reviewed this. We've made the changes to appropriate dates and timeframes and it just makes things go a lot smoother for us in the elections world. We have to have these executed by the end of August. And so what's important is for approval of the template and for the clerk's office to execute the IGA with each individual entity.
Yeah, other than the dates, there was really no substantial changes that I saw from the last, yeah, so. I'd say if, if there aren't any other comments that come in or any changes, that we just put it on consent at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Any public comment on our IGA? Okay. Dating contract for Sun Country.
Commissioners Rory Hale, Director of Public Works.
Rory, somehow we need you to get closer to the mic.
I just need to talk louder.
Okay.
How about I do that? This is more of an update. At this point, we did hold the bid opening. We actually had nine contractors show up for the pre-bid conference, which in our geographic location is, is pretty significant. We had four bidders. And, when did we do that? Bid opening on the twelfth. Of the four bidders and it was, it was pretty close in the top three, but the actual low bidder came in significantly lower than the rest. They still come in, all of them still come in under the original engineer's estimate, which is good. We met with a contractor on the seventeenth to try to get a better scope of their schedule. Discussions with them that pertain to the discussions we had had with the residents in Sun Country and the desire that some of the residents had to do some additional paving. And obviously that's something that the residents are gonna be responsible for in working that out with a contractor. At this point, that, I think we're ready to go with making the recommendation to approve, issue notice to proceed and get started on the project. I can't give you a specific start date. They're still within the, the schedule. And I, I believe I sent that, I sent that to you last week.
You did.
For all intents and purposes, they should be able to get started, I would say by before mid-month, next month.
The low bidder, can you expand on, I think there was a specific part of that bid that-
Traffic control piece.
That can, yeah, the traffic control component.
There was one red flag that, that popped up and it was related to traffic control. All the other bidders had six-figure bid numbers. They didn't. After discussions with them, we're a lot more comfortable. It's, it's a contractor, it's a veteran-owned company. It's a contractor that has done and is continuing to do a lot of federal military projects and core projects. So they have to have all of their, their own traffic control in-house.
Their own resource.
That, that's gonna save tremendously plus, they're located in Castle Rock, so that alleviates a lot of the mobilization costs that the other companies would have, would have incurred.
So the other, the other contractors were outsourcing the traffic control and renting equipment, so.
Right, okay, yeah.
One of the things is the public media has talked about is that our audit report, having a, a number i- in the audit report, was significantly larger than the actual bids. Could you make a comment about that?
Do you wanna talk specifically about the bid numbers?
It's probably easier for us to-
That's probably something we can, yeah, we could probably cover.
Okay, so-
Yeah, I think it's one that we'll talk about. I mean, I know you've got project oversight, it's our job to fund it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. Did you wanna go ahead?
Okay. Yeah, actually, I'll- Yeah, just so we're, since you brought up the numbers.
You kind of brought up the numbers, so we-
The project that was approved by the Tabor election in Sun Country had some very specific numbers in it. That the, the amount that they would borrow as a community would not exceed two-point-eight million dollars. That their mill rate that would be collecting the money that would pay that back wouldn't go above, I believe it was sixteen-point-three, thirteen-point-three-five mills. The total collections each year from the community would be no more than a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And the total payback, principal and interest on all the monies used wouldn't exceed three-point-one-five million. The contract's not in front of us. My understanding is the low bid, the, the lowest good bid to do the project to standard came in at two million sixty-four thousand. We had estimated going forward, way back last fall, that it could be in the two-point-six million dollar range. The question that was presented to the, the people for borrowing was two-point-eight, just to put a cushion. Cause you never know, when gas prices go up, asphalt prices go up. When the stock market goes down, bond prices go up, etc., you know, so. Trying to work within parameters that were feasible for the community, that's what was placed on the ballot question, that's what came back. So the people of Sun Country approved that ballot question. They approved the borrowing, the payback, the, an interest rate not to exceed five percent, I believe was the, the number, total payback, the other numbers that I had mentioned. They, that was approved by the voters. If you remember, back at the beginning of the year, the stock market had started to take a little bit of a dip. Came roaring back, obviously, after the fact, but at that point, we saw potential of bond borrowing rates going up. So we bonded a portion of that money, one-point-eight million dollars, to, to lock in that bond rate at that time. That, now with the bid coming back at two-point-zero-six-four million, leaves us a little short on the bonded amount. What we have done and what was listed in the audit report is, we pledged at that point, way back when, up to nine-hundred thousand dollars to cover, you know, the, the difference between what was bonded and the potential full cost of the project without knowing what the bids would come back to. That, to me, is just a, an ethical issue. We can't go out to bid, ask people to bid on a contract that we think is gonna be well in excess of two million dollars with one-point-eight million sitting aside. So that was the, the nine-hundred thousand dollars that folks have, have mentioned. As it comes back with the, the bid we've got, we will put in as a no-interest loan from the county, two-hundred thousand sixty-four, yeah, two, yeah.
Two-hundred?
Two-hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. What the county gets for that is a community that is paving three-point-two miles of county roads. It's in their neighborhood, but they're county roads. The people of Sun Country will pay back the principal and interest on the bond, plus the no-interest loan to the county. So what we are getting as a county is two-point-one million dollars worth of new roads, reduce maintenance costs going into the future, cause we're not gonna have a grader out there, tw- you know, two days a week grading that section of roads that can be devoted elsewhere. And what the people of Sun Country are going to pay for that privilege of paying for two-point-one million mi- or two-point-one million dollars worth of roads with principal and interest and the payback of our loan, which looks like with the numbers, will be paid back to the county in about four years, is closer to two-point-nine million dollars. So if anybody thinks they're not paying interest on getting those county roads paved on behalf of the county at their cost, they're just wrong. The two, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars is, is a considerable amount of money, but I said, we expect payback in full within about four years. It's well under the fund balances that, that we carry. It's the right thing to do. The fact that we have a community in this county that's willing to actually trust the county and road and bridge to do something on their behalf is a milestone in this county. There is nothing that we as a county like more than to bash each other. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for this county to prove that we can serve the citizens. We can do it well, we can do it thoughtfully, and we can do it at the best price possible for everybody involved. And I personally truly thank the people of Sun Country trusting the county with this project. I mean, they, they are putting, as I said, it'll be about two-point-million, two-point-nine million dollars in their own money into count, paving county roads. They're the roads closest to their homes, but at the end of the day, they're gonna be roads that only cost a little over two million dollars. So they're putting a huge premium on to do this for their own community and it certainly helps the county, cause we're gonna be focusing on numbered county roads for a long time to come. I mean, you know, depending on who you- I mean, uh, you know, depending on who you talk to, I'll say we'll never, you know, that it's going to be a long, long time before we get to paving any subdivision roads. You know, others at the table may say we'll never get there, but, but this is one way that it can happen. And it, it's a tremendous, tremendous vote of faith by the folks of Sun Country. And we took that very seriously. This is something that will be done, will be done right. It's within the numbers that they pledged to us. And we'll fulfill our pledge to build those roads, so. I have a little passion about this. Thanks.
Very well said.
Very well.
Thanks, Chris.
And you know, the, that, uh, large number that was in the audit report was basically a reiteration of the worst-case scenario. And it was based on our preliminary engineering studies. And then I think they added two-hundred-thousand dollars to that number just in case. Because those of us that have done projects, and I know there's some people in here that have done projects, quite often the bids come in higher than you anticipated. So, uh, Chris just said, uh, Miss, uh, Commissioner Richardson just said it just right, of the overall, uh, contributions that this community is making to the county, it's, uh, it's something that we need to say thank you for. It's something that, uh, will be a, uh, indication of what other communities might do. We can't force them to do it, but we're going through a process here. It's going to be beneficial to the county, it's going to be beneficial to the community, and it's being done for a reasonable cost. So we had to go through the process to get there. We can give Linda a chance to come up and say thank you if she wishes. Or say we're terrible people to deal with, or whatever you wish to say.
Linda Krauser from Sun Country. It's been a long road. It hasn't been an easy road. But I want to say to you three gentlemen, to the staff of Road and Bridge, to the open communication, uh, you guys have just, you've rocked it. That's all I can tell you. And yes, people, you know, some are unhappy. And, um, my thought is, once we cut that ribbon and they start driving those roads, they're going to go, oh, well, this isn't so bad. And, um, people aren't going to complain about, uh, their roads or their vehicles being torn up, which they are. And I have a feeling it's going to make the outback people real happy once we are on our own paved roads. So gentlemen, thank you very much. Rory, your staff.
Linda, that's an inside joke, isn't it?
I think everybody knows about it. Anyway, to everybody with Albert County, thank you. Thank you for your transparency, your support, and you're always available. So my hat is off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And I know you've.
Thank you, because you were the one who prompted it and brought this forward. You've been working with us for a long time.
Yeah. What seems like a long time in government time? I mean, this is about the time you came to us last year to propose this. And that road is on track to be paved within one year of the vote of that community. And it took us longer than that to, to work our way through just the right-to-farm, which everybody agreed to, so. You know, signs that Farm Bureau will support paying for, you know, roads that the communities will take on. It, it's a good thing, so, thank you.
Do you have any public comment on Sun Country roads?
Commissioner Jim Duval, four-zero-seven-five-three, County Road Twenty-One, Elizabeth. Appreciate the explanation of how we arrived where we are. Uh, one-point-eight is seventy, just less than seventy percent of the two-point-six that you mentioned that was your original estimate. I understood the two-point-eight as a little fudge factor. I don't think anyone has said that Sun Country is not paying for these roads. Where, where the issue I believe is, is why did you bond for one-point-eight as opposed to two-point-oh, two-point-two, two-point-four to lock in rates? Secondly, uh, to provide the difference from county funds, I think you could use that two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars. Even if you put it into a CD for four years, which would get you the money back also at some interest. I just disagree with your decision. Thank you.
Marling Groves, thirty-three, three-hundred Ridge Road. Um, I don't live in Sun Country, but my son does, and I do know the roads are horrid. And so, um, it'll be nice to drive down them when they're not so bad. I think maybe one of the points that, let's say both sides are missing in some of this is, it isn't the fact that, you know, we're moving forward with getting this road paved. Or let's say that there was the slight deficiency in the number in the bonding. And I understand what Chris said, and maybe other people didn't hear that. The market was going weird, the bonding amounts were going cuckoo. So the bond was under amount to what the cost of the road would be. And so I do think that it does, uh, make sense to fill that gap. What doesn't make sense to me respectfully is that we don't tell people that we're doing that until we make that commitment to do that. And all of you gentlemen ran on the platform of transparency, and you've done a much better job than all of your predecessors. But I think where you get in the weeds is when it comes up like a gotcha. It just doesn't always feel as transparent. And then, you know, when you read something through the audit report, and of course, that's the worst-case number, it's nine-hundred-thousand dollars. And anybody reads that and they go, whoa, what is that? And then when it wasn't known about. So I, I'm just trying to, um, make sure that people understand from both sides a perspective. From the citizens' standpoint, they just want to know what's happening. And then, of course, you guys are trying to make the best decisions to move forward on this big project that's going to help us with cleaning up our roads and things like that. But there's a middle ground here, and it's called being respectful and transparent and communicating with people. And not making people think that you're bad for making the decision, or the citizens are bad for asking the question. I think we need to be in the middle. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will just add and that everything we do, when we make decisions, we make them publicly. We had a public meeting where the bonding and financing of this was discussed. Uh, the bankers that facilitated this stood at that podium. The additional money from the counties was talked about at that time. Now, I, it, I will admit that to me, that doesn't seem like a big deal. Uh, but it was discussed publicly and not everybody makes every meeting. We do, but not everybody in the public does. And some of the things that pass by us as a matter of course, that don't seem like they need to be trumpeted. I mean, we just don't get trumpeted. If, this was one that apparently, um, we missed the mark on how, what, uh, public might want to know. Um, everything that you have a right to know is out there. Everything we do, um, is public. But, uh, just because somebody doesn't know about something doesn't mean that it was hidden. It just wasn't presented in their presence, or it wasn't emphasized to a level where it was picked up. I mean, there's no intent, and I don't think there's two sides here. We all want what's best for the county, so, thanks.
I agree. Thank you. Onto, um, action items. First one on the list, we've got July eleven minutes.
Um, Mr. Chair, I recommend that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented.
Second. Do we have any comment on our minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one? I believe we have the, uh, July twenty-fifth. Uh, wait a minute, I'm, uh, consideration of record, records retention policy.
Was Justin going to say something?
I think he was.
Okay.
Please. Cause I don't believe we're ready to. Are we ready? We're not ready to, uh, act on it yet.
Yep, still morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Justin Claussen, Director of Administration. The records retention policy, I am happy to say, I think is ready for your approval. Um, we received comments from our IT department, and those, those comments were incorporated. So those, uh, that, that records retention policy in its current state, which you have been presented, should be, in our opinion, ready for approval. It's been a long road to get that done, and I think it's going to be a, uh, not a longer road. But this is, this policy is going to help us going forward on developing our individual schedules for the different departments and potentially offices if, if appropriate. And, uh, hopefully we can clean house on some of the things that we have in excess of, that we've never been able to destroy in the, in the past. So, uh, again, that can't happen until these schedules are created. So we'll look, that, that's kind of the phase two of this process, so.
So you have an interdepartmental consensus that this is the right way to go?
I, I, on, based on the comments that I have received, all comments have been incorporated as appropriate, and there have been no further comments other than IT, and those comments have also been incorporated. So to this point, I don't believe that we are not in consensus as a staff that this policy is ready to go.
Alright. Okay. Are you ready to? Alright, cause I read through it.
Yeah.
So do we?
Yeah.
Do you want to do public comment, or do you want to?
Well, let's do a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the, uh, records retention policy as presented.
Second.
Second. Do we have any public comment on our records retention policy?
I just heard, uh, this is Miguel Alvarez, five-one-two Meadow Station Circle. Um, I just heard the gentleman say that he was fairly sure that every, there was consensus, but I didn't see, feel a confirmation of the consensus. Just that comments came in and there's no other comments, but no actual confirmation. Here's the final policy. Does everybody agree, right? So it's kind of an assumption that everybody agrees, but not a confirmation. That's my comment.
And I do note, uh, this policy's been in draft and worked for several, several months. So if, if the wording wasn't definitive, uh, we, we definitely got an earful from many parts of the county in, on the first draft. And there's been several workshops to, with all the key players together, um, to, to pull this together, so. Underhand, understand how it may sound, uh, when you step into one meeting in the, in midstream.
And, and the purpose of my question was to confirm the consensus. And if, uh, Mr. Claussen didn't say it stridently enough, uh, that, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, the reason I asked the question was, yeah, to confirm the consensus.
And the most recent studies, as you know, we had truly brought out all the, uh, inconsistencies or, or differences that we had, and we got to work a lot, work through a lot of them.
One of the, probably the most important parts of this is, uh, what Justin did mention. That the next step forward is to ensure that all departments and directorates, offices have their retention schedules, so. You know, one, that does allow documents that no longer have value to be destroyed, so we're not paying for storage of things we don't need. But probably the more important part is, it really does require review, review of the information we keep, how we keep it. And when we get requests, we're likely to have a much better handle, much quicker on what we do have available, um, to respond to public inquiry. And I think even Rory had mentioned earlier today that after going down to look at the flooding in Albert, they came back. And I think there were probably some conversations and a little bit of looking around. And we found a engineering study we had paid for in twenty-ten that addressed that issue. That, you know, if your records aren't in good shape, we could have very well, I'm sure Rory would have been in telling us we needed to, to, uh, go out and do an engineering study at great expense. Well, we have one. So, I mean, there's, this has been a long process that's really, I mean, this is a, a subcomponent of our overall transparency policy. Uh, but the big thing is, you know, you can't move forward as an organization unless you know yourself. And this is a big part of, I mean, I hate to say self-discovery, or sound weasely and wishy-washy, but we need to know more about ourselves, so we know what we're dealing with as we go forward, so.
Any more public comment? Okay, at this time, I think we've got motion in a second.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the, uh, this is the Health and Human Services Attorney Contract. Consideration, I think, do we want to, um, move to, uh, do that, and then I'll open it up for comment? And move that we.
Yeah, to open discussion on this, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the contract as presented to, re-engage the, uh,
Attorney.
The Attorney for Human Services.
Okay.
I'll second that motion with the understanding that, uh,
We're going to go through discussion.
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, we will open it up for, um, public discussion.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Greg Decker. I live at seven-thousand County Road one-twenty-eight. I had the opportunity to speak to you the last time we met on this subject about my concerns about such a large contract, a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar contract, being given to someone outside of Albert County. And those concerns, I still have that, those level of concerns. Um, and I appreciate you hearing me last time. Um, my, my concern very clearly is the appropriate allocation of funds for a cash-strapped county like we are that goes outside of our county. Um, it just, very simply, I think we need to do a better job of finding candidates. The simple fact is, is that I was very uneducated on this subject before I got here last time, but we learned a lot. We learned not only from comments were made here in the room, but from people we spoke to outside of the room, that an RFP was issued that this person was hired on originally, but that that RFP was never sent out. It was merely posted on our website and nowhere else. I would like to believe that if it's a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar contract, we'd be a little more proactive in getting the contract out there to the legal community. I know I spent twenty-eight years in corporate America. I did RFPs for as little as fifty thousand and as much as fifty million dollars. And I can guarantee you, I found every single provider of those services and proactively sent them a notice that, hey, we have an RFP out there, here's where you find it. And I, I believe we owe it to the county, we owe it to the constituents in this room, and to every taxpayer in this county, to every person who lives in this county, to make that kind of effort when we're going to spend this kind of money. Because just getting one response, in my opinion, is not good enough. We have to have more responses. We might still end up hiring the same person. That's not the point. The point isn't the person. I, I'm, I'm complaining about the process. I don't think we're doing this right. And so what I would like to see done is, I would like to see this motion tabled. I would like to see it tabled until we reissue the RFP. I would like to see someone contact the Colorado Bar Association, ask for a list of all the law firms within a five-county area that touches our borders at the very least, if not wider, since the last candidate came from downtown Denver. Get this out there, get a notice to them, repost the RFP, get a notice and say, you've got thirty days to read, to look at this and respond if you're interested, whatever. But get it out there to the world, cause I have to believe. I have to believe with the thousands of attorneys that live in Colorado, there's more than one qualified person who would want to provide services to Albert County. And I just feel like we, we, like I said, we may end up selecting the same person anyway. This is not about the person. This is about the process. But let's get more bids in there. Let's get more people involved. We may decide that we want to actually spend more money, cause we find even more qualified candidate. This is a very difficult position. Having said that as well, though, just sitting here in the back of the room for giggles, I went and Googled Assistant County Attorney, cause that's basically kind of what this position is like. It's not the head county attorney, it's an attorney underneath. Just to kind of see what the, what the, uh, fees were. And they were much less than a hundred. And they were much less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, you know, the reality to me is, is I just think we owe the county a much better job of seeking candidates, getting more than one candidate, cuz one just doesn't seem to, I don't know. It just strikes me wrong. I think we can do better. I think we owe the county better, I think we owe our residents better, and we can do a better job of doing that. So my request to you would be please table this motion, do not vote on it, and go ahead and get this thing back out there. And let's find some candidates to talk about so we can make sure that we're making the right choice for our county. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, just to clarify, I can let the commissioners know that I did send the RFP and job description out to all sixty-four counties, all county attorney's offices indicating that they should pass that along to all individuals within their offices as well as contract attorneys or anyone that they think may have been interested. So we did do other avenues in order to ensure that that went out to legal professionals within the state of Colorado that hold a license to practice law.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing. Sir, could you also speak to the specificity of this?
This is not a generalist-
This is not a generally county attorney.
Extremely specialized subspecialty of family laws. It's essentially what you call dependency neglect law. But not only does Mister Timlin do that, he also has handled the elder abuse and child support enforcement dockets as well. One or two other things as well. But the dependency neglect side of things is, it's a different kind of law. It's highly confidential as it involves allegations of dependency neglect. Basically allegations of child abuse or neglect is, it's confidential because there's minors and children involved. Generally, that is kept secret because, you know, the policymakers as a whole have felt that it's not helpful in most cases for the general public to know who's been alleged to have been abusive or neglectful of their children, especially if it hasn't been proven yet. So it's a very confidential process, as I say again, because children are involved and that's taken pretty seriously by the state and by the county. So knowing all the ins and outs, the fact that there's new laws every single year, either by the federal authorities or state authorities that you have to keep on top of, you know, certainly is something that not even a typical family law attorney would be frankly competent to just walk in and handle a case like that.
Alright, thank you.
Sir.
Sorry.
Morning, gentlemen. Brian Love, three seven six four zero, Skyview Circle. Just to kind of piggyback on Mister Greer here a little bit, it seems as though you guys are a little bit in the dark about what's going on with this gentleman. However, I do see that he has had two contracts that were recorded right before our last meeting on July the eleventh that states at least two of you should have been present at that meeting. Trying to, I just wanted to know if I can get that information as to who was at that meeting when these contracts were signed with Mister Timlin right here. And just if anybody has that information. We've asked for open records requests regarding to this and we were referred to YouTube. So just trying to put the pieces together and where we're at. The process, the process is failing. It's not the individual, it's the process. Like I said, I've got two contracts right here, effective July the first, signed by our Mister County Manager, Sam Albright, and Jerry Spear. It also says, you know, there's Colorado Sunshine Law that states that two or more of you need to be in an office together, the meetings need to be recorded, and we need to put those out there. So I'd like to ask for the documentation as to why or how these two contracts were signed, irregardless of the amounts. I do see Mister Richardson, just a few minutes ago, said, when we make a decision, we make them publicly. I think everybody in this room heard that about five minutes ago. And I'm trying to understand.
Actually, one, I'm not sure what documents you're talking about. When we make a decision, we make decisions publicly. The county manager has authorities to contract for service contracts up to a certain amount. I'm not, again, I'm not. I'm not sure what that contract is, but.
The question that you said there, that there has to be two of us in the room, I'm puzzled what you mean.
I'm not an attorney, that's just per the Colorado Sunshine Law.
Yeah, but what happens is at a public meeting, we vote, and I don't know which meeting it was, but we vote to have our county manager sign the contract.
They're just, they're month to month. Month to month dues.
Yeah, these are-
These are their-
Months to month, it looks like months to month expense extension.
Correct, but it's contracts, is it not?
Yes, it is a contract.
But it's not, but it's not the general contract for services with the firm.
It says there's general contracts. It gives you an hourly rate.
This is, and it will go over that, but this is not there. I believe you do it annually. You redo.
His contract expired June thirtieth.
And that's why we're here.
This is an extension of that contract.
Yes.
Which is a contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have those back, please?
Certainly. Okay, for those of you that weren't privy to the documents we were given, they look to me like very simple month-to-month extensions of the services that we had engaged last year. Yes, they look to me like that.
They look like that, that's exactly what they looked at. And sir, we got your comments, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any more citizen comment?
Now, the county is still required to provide services to the people of this county. That requires attorney-
Thank you.
-representation. Those were month-to-month extensions to- Look at the- Sir, we've had your comments, thank you. Sorry, sorry. I appreciate Mister Chair. Yeah, the, yes, it does say a year, my error. But the rates and charges capped the total amount to twelve thousand dollars, which is essentially a one-month portion of that.
Portion of the term.
Of that term. And right now, I'm not sitting in contract review, that's what we have an attorney for.
Okay. Ma'am.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Borden. I have with me my daughter Rebecca Borden. We live at eight oh two Pueblo Avenue in Simla, Colorado. Last July eleventh meeting, I told you that my daughter had been sexually abused. This is her. And she is-
Should this be public?
She is-
Ma'am.
Ma'am, was that reported to the authorities?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
It was reported to DHS and DHS has flat told me that she can go back into the same home as the abuser is living in.
This is information-
You tell me, Mister Greer said that sexual abuse cases, child abuse cases, are very important to the state and to this county. If Jeffrey Tillman is not doing his job to protect my daughter, then what are you paying him for?
Ma'am.
Ma'am, here's-
You're alleging a criminal act. You say it's been reported. If it has been investigated as it should be and a determination made, there's not anything else we should be doing at this table with this.
No, and this information you were speaking to is not something that is appropriate to be presented here.
And quite frankly-
This deals with an individual, a child, okay? This type of information should be discussed somewhere private with other people. We understand your concerns, okay? And I understand, but right now, I wish, the concern is with the contract.
The concern is with the contract.
Leave what has happened to your daughter, I am really sorry.
If he is not doing his job-
Yes.
-with what you're paying him for, then why are you paying him? Why are you extending a contract to somebody-
Because we don't know this specifics.
-that will not take up cases in Albert County for Albert County residents?
Ma'am, what you have described as a criminal act.
And commissioners-
And quite honestly, I am appalled that you have a child here in the room presenting this publicly.
To do this, that's just-
I want you to have a face.
I appreciate that.
I want you to see my daughter.
I appreciate that, ma'am.
Because you guys sit there and say that you claim that you care about the Albert County residents, but you're extending a contract out to an attorney who is not doing his job in protecting the residents.
I can't compare a contract to a life. We're done.
And commissioners?
Okay, please, have a seat.
Thank you. I can also reiterate that at the last meeting, I indicated that there was a pathway for any concern to be reported to the state and the ombudsman. I did state that, and this is not the proper form to relitigate or to litigate this sort of an issue.
Thank you.
I apologize, folks, we probably got a little emotional, but this is not the area. I just, this isn't appropriate. Okay, at this time, we've got a contract, I don't know that we're looking at to approve. Jerry, do you have, can you speak to anything?
Good morning, commissioners. Jerry Spear, Director of Health and Human Services. As we all know, at this point, the contract before you is for child welfare services, legal services for our agency, for the human services part of our agency. I believe the other documents that were presented to you, I actually separated them out this year for budgetary reasons. I wanted to, we also, Mister Timlin also contracts us for adult protection services, which is a separate contract, and also for child support services, which is a separate contract, which does fall under the hundred thousand dollar limit for contract signing that Mister Albreck has your authority to do. So if that helps clarify for you what the other two documents we're referencing that were shown to you. So this one is specific to child welfare services. And yes, as you all know, that is a routine part of our work, is that although not all cases that we investigate or that are referred to us for assessment, that we screen in for assessment to, for any familial, we have to, it's a very specific part of the law that we can only focus on our work. So it's familial child abuse and neglect. And we receive referrals and I think I've got numbers here a little bit. So as of June thirtieth, we've received two hundred and seventeen referrals. So that means there are people in the community, whether they are mandated reporters, whether they are family members, whether they are just concerned citizens, have called us two hundred and seventeen times so far this year from January one to report concerns of abuse and neglect. Out of those, we have, we have a very, I don't wanna say lengthy, but it's a process that the state requires across the state. By every county, we are supposed to be following the same process that we assess these referrals to see if they're appropriate for our department to go in and assess for further consideration for any treatment services, any potential legal action that we may take. But not all, and we are at twenty percent, twenty-six percent of those have we actually looked, have assessed. The others, we have said they don't fit the criteria. Again, ours are, we need to be careful that we don't overreact or underreact. There's safety of children involved. As we all know, we've seen the headlines about child abuse, I mean, child fatalities of children, and we want to prevent that, but we also don't wanna overreach and reach too far into families. We also look at the fact whether the parents themselves, if they're doing protective, if they're protecting the child, and we don't need to intervene. That's one of the other areas we look at. We don't get involved in custody involvement and we do not do criminal law. So we have a very narrow scope and it's, all of our staff, even though they all have to have degrees coming into the work, they also have a very lengthy training process at the state. And it's ongoing training and it's ongoing monitoring. We have several layers of a review to make sure that we are doing the work we're supposed to be doing and in the manner we're supposed to be doing. So as I said, many of the cases, we, Mister Timlin as, or any attorney that we have is not involved in because it doesn't reach to that level. We provide services, we are trying to be family-focused. There's a whole practice model, a change in the state and the national process and federal processes that are really trying to become as family-oriented as possible. So our goal is to keep children in the home. That's our first goal. If we can't keep them in the home, to return them to home as soon as possible. And so in that sense, what we do is we do family group decision-making. It's a process that we get all the players together and really look at their strengths and weaknesses, ask them what they could use to help them become better. Parents, most families work with us, I shouldn't, I don't, can't, you know, I don't can't say statistically, but families work with us a lot of times voluntarily. A family may even refer themselves to us and ask for assistance. And that's a huge part of the work that we do. Our work is to bring in services to a family, to address whatever dynamics are going on that led them to become, come to our forefront for us. So just in a real nutshell, that's what our work is. So, but there are times when we do have to go to court that the safety, the risk to the child is so high that we need court involvement, court oversight. And that's where Mister Timlin then represents the department in Albert County in our work. But then there's also, at that point, a guardian alightum appointed, which is another attorney that represents the interests of the child only. And then there are respondent parent attorneys, which some parents have the ability to hire their own attorneys and sometimes they are court-appointed. If they don't have the, depending on obviously the financial status of the family. So, and then at that point, then of course, the judge is overseeing everything and he's making those final determinations. So that's just in a nutshell, our work and why we have to have an attorney. And we can't have gaps in that because our work is ongoing. So last year, yes, we, practice-wise, we had up until, I believe, three years ago when Mister Greer joined the county as Assistant County Attorney, we did have contract attorney, not the same one. But we, for years, had had contract attorneys. That's a pretty normal practice across the state to have contract attorneys to do child protection, legal work for counties. But it's not the only practice. So at that point, the decision was made by the prior county manager that they wanted to have an Assistant County Attorney that did primarily our work for our department, but also then could do some other work for the county. So as you know, then when we shifted and did some reorganization and Mister Greer then became the county attorney last fall into summer, then that's when we went out and we decided that we would go back to the practice of having a contract attorney. So the RFP was put out. I am not an RFP person, I gave the information and I don't know if it was Ms. Zion or Mister Greer that handled the actual process. So I can't speak to our RFP process, I don't understand it. I don't do RFPs normally for the work we do. But that's how it was handled. The RFP closed on August twenty-fifth of two thousand and seventeen. We did receive, the only, the only person that did, excuse me, the only one that we did receive a proposal from was Mister Timlin and his department, his offices. As we know, I think we all, as we're in this work, and I heard Mister Hale talk to that too about the number of proposals when we put out RFPs. Albert County doesn't always get a large number of proposals. So I remember he said he was really happy that he had so many that came in. Although I would have liked to have more, I was very pleased to see one that came in from an attorney that has been doing this work for thirty-four years, thirty-five years, I think, at this point. As Mister Greer pointed out, I guess I brought my Bible. Sherry was making fun of me saying like- Um, as Mr. Greer pointed out, I guess I brought my Bible, Sherry was, her, making fun of me, saying like, will I, I, will I be smarter because I color, you, I'm carrying in the Colorado Children's Code? Will that make me any smarter by osmosis? But this is basically the Bible for D, D N Ns, it is Title Twenty of the Colorado Revised Statutes that covers all of the work that we have to do in child protection. And again, this is statewide, state mandated work that we have to do. Um, regarding the funding, eighty percent plus, it's a little less, it's a little more than eighty percent when I add in some of the other factors, is, the funding comes from state and federal sources. Um, counties, there are counties that would like not to be a part of this, but, well, county sued the state in the mid-nineties to actually make the state take back human services, and they lost the lawsuit. So counties are required to provide these services by law, and this is the process that we have to follow. Um, Children's Code. So, yes, going back to Mr. Timlin himself. I had never met Mr. Timlin, I'd never worked with Mr. Timlin, I had known, I knew a little bit just by, um, reputation that he was very highly respected, um, as, as a D N N attorney. He's worked, he does this work in Douglas County, he also works, I believe, in Jefferson County and Arapahoe County and other, in the different roles, and he also works as a guardian en lightum, so he also has that role that he, he, he does in D N N cases, and he also works as a respondent parent attorney. So he also represents parents in D N Ns, obviously not in our county, that would be a conflict of interest for this role. So, um, and yes, it's not a, it's not a role that we want to switch back and forth, we need that, that consistency, this is usually a longer term relationship based on performance. I have met with Mr. Timlin numerous times this past year, because, as I said, I didn't know him, I had never met him, um, and I met with him before we did a contract last year, and I sat down and said, "Here's my expectations, this is what we're looking for." I was very pleased with that meeting, I'm very pleased with the professionalism and the integrity in which he handles our cases. Um, he's, like I say, he's highly respected, and even if, by opposing counsel, I've talked to them, and they respect him, they don't always agree with him, obviously, they're on opposite sides many times. Um, I think he brings level, level of credibility and professionalism to our, our, our county and the work that we're doing, the wealth of knowledge, I can't be beaten. Again, we talked about, this is a specialized, um, specialized area of law, and they're very, I would assume there are very few that practice it, as somebody's point, I think was pointed out last time, that, that, the, the rate actually is very low when you can look at most attorneys' rates. But that's what, um, dependency neglect attorneys do, usually there's a passion for it, and they also know that, yes, this is taxpayers' dollars, and we are a government entity, and so they always lower their rates for this work. I'm not, I have no idea what his rates are for his other work, for any criminal law or any other law, uh, you know, um, personal law that, that he practices, but, but this is common practice, these are the same rates that he charges for Douglas County, and that's how he established his rates. Our RFP didn't establish an amount overall, we didn't, there was, so the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was not a target rate, this is based on the work that we've been looking at this year, and an increase of the caseload, some increase in caseload, I have to assume, is based on the increase in population, and some anticipation of the work that we may need to be doing. We rarely go to trial, most of the families work with us, because again, this is not criminal law, there is no guilt or in- innocence in this, is it? All we, ours is of civil proceedings, dependency neglect or civil proceedings that speak only to the status of a child. Are they dependent, you know, that means eighteen or under, and, um, are they neglected or abused, uh, you know, under state statute, and just, and, and all that, that is required by that? So, that is what we do, I have no qualms about re- um, recommending, um, continuation of this contract. Yeah, I took a little bit longer on this, I was really just, I was trying to be the miserly department head and trying to figure out if there's any other way I can get it lower, the overall total, not the hourly rate, and seeing if there was anything we could do more in-house by my staff. And so I met several times with Mr. Timlin, he works, he's, like I say, I'm impressed with his professionalism and his integrity and what he brings to the table, and, um, say, I, I've been monitoring this pretty closely for the last nine months, because I had no, I had not worked with him before, and I take my job very seriously, I've been doing this for over twenty-five years, worked with numerous attorneys on both, all sides of it, and I put him right at the, him and his associates at the top of, of, at the, the list of, of the people that I've worked with and, and his ability and skills and his professionalism. So I am recommending that you sign this contract.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, HHS is the client.
Yes.
Yes.
And they're representing HHS.
Yes.
Uh, so, and if I understood what you said, and I don't understand what you do really well, but if I understand what you said, it's your internal process that determines how to handle these kind of situations. And then if you decide, whatever you decide, then you use, being the, the attorney is, you're the client for the attorney, then the, uh, attorney will give you some guidance on how to process that kind of whatever it is. So, the attorney represents Albert County HHS.
Yes.
And your job, if I understand it correctly, is to determine what is the appropriate action to take.
Yes.
And then the attorney helps you accomplish that.
Yes, any, any time...
Have I misunderstood?
Yes, any, any time that it's determined that we need to seek legal, legal action, and Mr. Greer may, may or may not have anything to say, uh, uh, further, um, dependency neglect action, which is the kind of actions that we file, the kind of motions that we would file or to, our title of dependency neglect. Um, then he is our legal representative and does all of the legal work that's required for that.
But your department is, uh, focuses on the appropriate action.
Yes, yes, so...
And then the attorney helps you do whatever it is.
Yes, that's correct, so not all of our cases do we, we file legal action, is what, yes, you're correct. A lot of times, we're working with families and providing services them, to them that don't ever go to, are never in front of a, a court.
I just want to say, one, I apologize a little bit for, um, you know, kind of showing my, a little bit of passion there, I've got a thirteen-year-old daughter. Um, the world that you and the rest of your staff work in, um, you're constantly working with families and individuals in distress, generally probably at the worst point in their lives, um. When government authority steps into family matters, it's going to be emotional, and generally, somebody's not going to be happy, I, I understand that, so, and, and I appreciate the information you provided, that Bart's provided. Um, the comments earlier on process are well taken, um, this does appear to be a extremely specialized, um, portion of the law. I would say, you know, sometimes Denver attorneys aren't the worst choice, um, if we're... The fact that he is very reputable, um, and working for us, and therefore not allowed to represent families means that local attorneys that may have closer ties to the community are available, uh, to represent families, and I think that's a positive thing in this, so, anyway, I just appreciate the input.
Sure. Anything else?
All right, Jerry, thank you. Okay. I'm looking out for any more comments. Okay, we've got a... Got a vote, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and this is for the approval of the contract? Do we approve the contract?
Yeah, the only comment I have is the one I was trying to make with Jerry there, and that is, is that this attorney represents the county.
Yes, it does.
And, uh, if I understood what, uh, she said correctly, is that they're the ones that determine what is the appropriate process going forward. And, uh, because of the legal issues that may be attended to that process...
That's the reason we have an attorney.
That's the reason we have attorney. So, the, the question is, is that, and, uh, I certainly sympathize with the young lady and her daughter, but the whole point is, is that, uh, the lawyer didn't determine, I don't, maybe I misunderstood, didn't determine what was the appropriate action, that would, that would be the department, if I understand it correctly.
Would you contact him about the emotions, the need to apply?
The implementation of whatever you determined.
And then he, he definitely represents the county.
Just to be clear, we cannot discuss any particular case, uh, in detail, just...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I close public comment, sorry. We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I believe next one on the, on action items is the, uh, special events permit, which I believe requires open a, uh, opening a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, Dallas, are you presenting that?
Good morning again, Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, consideration of a special event permit for the Elizabeth Area Chamber of Commerce for the Oktoberfest that's coming up. Uh, this is an annual event that they do, um, all postings and required paperwork have been filed with us, and, uh, the, the posting is still up, uh, fees have been received, and our office has received no notice of any violations of the event in the past.
Okay. Okay, anything?
No, I just, I see from the application that it's being held at Casey Jones Park and Parks and Recreation is...
Correct.
Supporting this as well, so...
Do you have any public comment on our, uh, Oktoberfest? Okay, I guess we'll take that as a comment. Okay. All right, so we got a motion, we need a motion to, um...
Okay, um, then, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the application for a special events permit for the, the Elizabeth Area Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest to be held from the fourth through the, wait a minute, the seventh through the eighth of September at Casey Jones Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to close public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we close public hearing this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is on the board planning.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, we have, uh, next time on the eighth, uh, liquor license renewal for Meadows Market, uh, and consent, also the I G A template, uh, for the two thousand eight, twenty eighteen election. We have update on drought situation, which I understand we'll have a special guest on that. Uh, consideration of library board members, uh, county fair wrap-up discussion, approval of these minutes, the draft fee schedule policy, and under land use, we have, uh, forty-four Delbert. There also may be a possible special meeting for Sun Country Metals P I D contract coming up, which we will post, and, uh, go from there, that's what I have so far.
Okay, do we, will the fee schedule be ready?
Uh, it's the policy.
The fee schedule, okay.
Want the, the full fee schedule?
And I believe we'll have the updated, we'll have the updated G I S. Do we have that?
Do you want to report on G I S?
Well... Sam, unless we get it back, unless we get it back.
I, yeah.
You got it? Oh, okay, all right.
You know, one of the things that I think would be worthwhile for the public to give an update of where we are and the update of our, uh, planning zoning and subdivision regulations.
I think that'd be good for our, uh, new, uh, director of C I S.
I think that that would be wonderful.
I think it'd be fantastic.
I've also been whispered that there'll be an upcoming study session on the twenty eighteen building code, but that's to be determined when it'll take place.
Okay. Okay. Good.
And Mr. Greer's mentioned the marijuana, what'd you say? Marijuana resolution.
Yep.
That may need further clarification.
Yeah. Uh, there'd be an update to the existing, um, moratorium. Yeah. Um, preclusion on, uh, selling and, and purchasing within the county, uh, to reflect some of the, uh, more recent legislation.
Okay. Do you have anything, Chris?
I'm good.
All right, we have no land use here this afternoon, got a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, folks.